That looks at, okay, is building this new facility going to generate more traffic in general for around the streets within the area? And what they found was that it was going to have a very small impact to the amount of traffic on the surrounding streets and neighborhood. And then the second part of the study got more into the parking. What was, what the current parking capacity was. They were onsite and they, they basically counted all the cars that came on and observed, you know, whether or not there was parking space available to them, cars coming, going. That during that time, it was quite a busy time, but what they observed was that the parking spaces onsite did get used and they did have people come and use the street parking as well. But from the previous approval of the, in 2016 for that 24-unit building, the plan was that there would be, I believe if I had my numbers right, approximately 47 spaces onsite, plus 13 spaces on 32nd Street and eight spaces on, I believe it's College, right there. So it basically confirmed that what we planned, what was planned in 2016 is being utilized today. And they, they recommended that we continue that same ratio of parking spaces going forward to meet the...
And when I read in there was that it was a little under one space per unit, is that right? Because I think the ordinance says 1.25.
The, well, so, yeah, the ordinance says 1.25 currently. We are requesting .5, which is what was, I believe the ordinance said, had .5 for this type of use in 2016. I believe it's been revised since then. So basically continuing with that same .5.
So you're making, you're making that request including the on-street parking as part of that calculation?
We would be utilized, yes, we're requesting to utilize on-street parking as part of that calculation. Now that's more, more for the future phases because we have plenty of parking, they have plenty of parking when you consider the entire site, which includes the church. There's about 62 parking spaces right there. The issue that they currently have, or the problem that they currently have that was pointed out in the report was people didn't know they could park there. There wasn't an internal connection to those parking spaces. So the thought is that now that we're proposing parking that's closer to it and it's going to have a drive to it and through maybe more public knowledge, you know, informing people, they will be able to park there. And that, if you just look at this current phase, there's, there's more than what would need. So we're kind of, what we're requesting is more to make sure the future lines up with what we think it needs to be done right now.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, I certainly think that the, the least number of parking spaces needed is, would be best and, and it always feels weird to me to use the public parking spaces on the street as part of the calculation. So I just wanted to make sure they were sort of keeping that in mind because they won't necessarily be there for your, for your, I mean, there's no other residential on that space, so it's likely that they'll be used for your facility, but...
Well, and there's two different things going on here, right? It's not an apartment building. We're talking about 80% of the people that are driving into that parking lot are visiting.
Right.
And they're not going to be staying overnight. So the street parking, which there's a certain amount of the year where you can't park overnight, can't be included for overnight parking, but if you do have more of an independent building, you'll have to factor that in later as far as people having their own vehicles. But even in that situation, they're living on the property because one of their loved ones is not driving and one of them is. So I think the .5 is definitely...
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Accurate, yep. Any other questions from the applicant at this point in time? No? Okay, thank you. Steve, did you have anything to add?
I do, if you don't mind.
You have one minute.
One minute.
Just kidding.
Yeah, so just maybe real quick to try to summarize maybe procedure and kind of what you're being asked to do tonight. Really, three things. Approve the site plan, or make a decision about the site plan. That's that Phase 1 addition that they were talking about. A recommendation to City Council for the rezoning, the rest of the property to PUD as they've kind of already described it. And then three, with our PUDs, we, the Planning Commission approves the PUD resolution. That kind of really just puts into writing, since we're really creating a new zoning district, right, the rules for the Rest Haven project. So those are really the three things that you're being asked to do. Just kind of work through this, a couple of slides here real quick. As they pointed out, the purple is the existing PUD, that yellow property outlined in yellow, sorry about that, is the expansion where they're asking to expand the PUD zoning district. This is what the campus looks like today. So that new building will be in the back on the top of that picture is where the addition would go. This is the site plan that you're being asked to approve tonight. So this is the addition as well as the driveway out to 32nd Street. You can see the additional parking outlined in a little bit heavier gray there. And I think this is what Kyle was referring to where that new parking lot now physically connects to the existing church parking lot to give access to all those, I think 62 spaces. This is the landscape plan that was submitted in the packet. What I wanted to point out here, obviously there's the existing landscaping that kind of coming off of College, so this would essentially extend that. I think this was one of the topics in the neighborhood meeting that they had, that the neighbors had asked really for that to continue. So there's two things really happening there. The landscaping is being continued and then the neighbors had asked for the eight-foot tall fence to continue. Typically, we would have a limit at six feet. The eight-foot tall fence is what was approved back in 2016 through a variance. So the idea is that this, the PUD language would recognize that and allow that to continue. Some of you that are really familiar with the site will notice that as you move west from College, the grade does start to come up. So that eight-foot tall fence over there closer to College probably doesn't look as tall as eight feet. As it goes west, it, it will look a little bit taller. But again, that is what, one of the things that the neighbors had asked for as part of the workshop meeting. Just a quick elevation drawing to show you. As we measure to the midpoint halfway between the peak and the E, this building measured as about 19 feet tall. I think it's about 25 to the peak, 23, 25, right around there. Very similar residential home. Just a quick floor plan. As you've already seen, this is sort of the overall master plan concept. So yes, one of the ideas was to rezone the rest of this property. They will have to come back to the Planning Commission for approval of Phase 2 and Phase 3, but the PUD would, would recognize, you know, that those uses would be permitted so they wouldn't have to rezone the property again, but they would have to come back and we would be able to reevaluate based on what the plans are at the time. Elevation drawings, we'll be able to talk about parking and those sorts of things. Again, this is really the site plan that you're being asked to vote on tonight, so you just sort of see that addition in the back. I wanted to point out a couple of things here in terms of the master plan. So this is in what we call urban residential. One of the uses, one of the contemplations for that district is high-density residential would be something to consider along major corridors in the city. 32nd Street is defined as a major corridor in the city. So the high-density residential would be a zoning district that would be at least applicable for a project like this. And that is a zoning district that allows for care facilities like this. So again, the idea isn't to have it be rezoned to HDR, high-density residential. The idea is that it would be PUD so that really the plans that you're looking at would be what can happen here, rather than if it was just rezoned HDR, then, you know, it could be something that fits into that zoning district. This is, you can see the property outlined as it fits into the rest of the city. This is our major street plan, so you can see that green indicating 32nd Street as a major road. The rezoning that was done in 2016 was really some of the area that we're talking about here tonight, but that was the first piece that went sort of to the west from their existing campus that gave them the room to do their most recent expansion. Again, this is just our use table. What I was trying to illustrate there, care facilities over there on the left-hand side, all of the districts where they are allowed. The HDR, which is what the district, the master plan, contemplates that this could be, the property could be zoned, as well as the PUD district is another area where care facilities are permitted use. So just talking about the property itself, they mentioned all of the property would be combined into one. In terms of how we sort of look at setbacks and those sorts of things, we determine which yards are front yards and side yards. So Central is really defined as the front yard because that's going to be the yard that has the narrowest width down the road. The other street frontages, 32nd Street, College, will be considered secondary fronts. And then really because it's a little bit unique having three frontages, not really assigning a rear yard, so the others are side yards. And so you'll see that reflected in the staff report, you'll see that reflected in the PUD resolution so that we can regulate those sorts of things. One of the things that's a little bit unique and that we wanted to point out here is that that side yard, that north property line as it abuts the residential homes, that setback is about 15 feet. If we were to apply the underlying zoning regulations of the LDR district, you could get as close as seven feet. So one of the things that we want to put in the regulations is we want that setback to be 15. So we actually want it to be a little bit different. We want to increase that to what it is out there with the existing building as well as what they're planning to do. So rather than, which is something maybe we would normally do, is follow the underlying zoning, but in this case, we want to actually increase that a little bit like what we're doing with the fence, where typically that fence would be limited to six feet. We want to put it in the PUD regulations that that fence can be eight feet tall.
Steve, you said that LDR is seven feet?
The side yard setback in...
And PUD is what?
We're going to put it at 15.
Okay.
So we're going to increase that. With, I'll just say with the one exception of, I guess what I'm describing as the northwest property line. This little, we would keep this at the seven feet, the normal. This is the one that abuts the bed and breakfast, but the, these other two, what we would call side yards, would be, we would increase from that minimum seven feet to 15. Does that make sense? It's a little bit, it's a little bit different out here again with having the three road Yeah, so this is kind of, again, their master plan drawing and so you can kind of see illustrated here what, if that north property line was, was indeed seven feet, what that would look like and we're suggesting simply to make it what the build, where the building's going to be set back. That's what I have for you. Maybe just real quick, make sure. The recommendation is to approve the site plan, approve the PUD resolution that you have in your packet and recommend to City Council the expansion of the PUD district. I will say, we did get at least one call from a neighbor about the project was in support of the request tonight. And I did share the PUD language with the applicant, so they've had a chance to review it and go through it and felt that it was fair, consistent with what you're looking at, so. That's what I have.
Okay. I do have one, I don't know if it's a question or just a statement, but it does seem kind of weird that we're staying 15 feet off of someone's rear property when you look at the houses. So we're really far away from their house, but then we're doing seven feet off the side of another house. So we're staying really close to that one. You know what I mean? The bed and breakfast, we're only going to do a seven-foot setback? So we're still very close to the house?
Yeah, I guess I thought that was appropriate just because of that use not being strictly residential.
Okay.
That, obviously that future phase hasn't been built, so if you wanted to, we could bump that to be 15, to be the same as the rest of them, but I guess that was my thought was that that wasn't as sensitive as the single-family residential.
I see your point, yep. Any other questions? No? At this point, I'm going to open a public hearing. This will be both for the rezoning and the site plan review. If you'd like to come forward, please state your name and address for the record and you have up to five minutes to talk on this item.
I'm Mike Osterhaus. I live at 20 East 30th Street, which is, puts me right behind the, so right, right behind the Phase, Phase 1. One thing, as you were talking about parking, do you, I don't know if you realize it, but a lot of that back parking lot exists right now. It was a place for them to put their snow as they moved it off from the parking lot and I don't, there was a big pile there this past year. So my question is, what are you going to do with this snow removal? Where is that going to go? That's one thing to consider. And one thing is the loss of green space that will occur as, as you put that in. And also loss of community use of the parking lot and they use it more. I've seen a lot of use of the, just people walking around and kids riding bicycles and, so that's an, that's a concern. I left my pen in my car and I wasn't able to take any notes. I just, it's going to be a loss for us because we enjoy the openness back there.
If you think of it later. You're only at almost two minutes. So if we're still an open public hearing, I'll let you come back up, but thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come forward on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing and discussion among commission members.
Where is the snow going to go?
That's a good question.
I can speak partially to that.
Okay.
He is correct. As he mentioned, as it has been for several years, the snow gets pushed to the western part of our current parking lot. I am at Maple Woods quite often even, and I will say, this is just my observation, we typically have less visitors in the winter because family members of residents, friends of residents are either snowbirds or don't want to get out when it's, when it's bad weather. So I have visited many times in the winter, as I am not yet a snowbird, and I have not had concerns with parking, given the space that the snow takes up. I don't know that Kyle wants to discuss that any further. I don't know if we've planned for snow, but as it stands now, it has not been an issue.
Yeah, so, so we did consider a little bit of the snow removal in the design or where it was going to go. So just south of the proposed building and west of the proposed parking spaces, the 17 spaces that we're proposing, there is a small green space for putting some snow there. Granted, it's not a big enough space. We also removed, like in the very kind of like center of the site, there was a large kind of like parking area that wasn't in very good shape and we thought it would be better used just to remove it and turn it into green space. Now, we are proposing a couple of trees in that area, but that is another kind of in the middle of that site, there's, there's a lot of green space to move that snow around and pile it up onsite without, I guess, without having much of a problem, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I do have a question for the applicant and I don't know if anyone else has thought about this, but I know that there was a traffic study done, but I am wondering why you didn't consider doing an entrance off of Central and connecting it to College through the property and doing the circle in the middle there? And then instead of doing an entrance off of 32nd Street where we already have College and Central and it's very hard to cross there when we have high traffic counts going down 32nd and it's extra busy? I can just foresee having to have a turning lane added there and that area already has residential uses all the way down 32nd Street, so to me, that's a concern.
So part of the reasoning for how we looked at the site from a master planning perspective was the task of adding the 24 units to the existing Maple Woods cottage. The fact that we have this easement from the old 32nd Street crossing through the site and then replacing the legacy building where the church currently resides, and that was a big focus for Rest Haven to be able to compensate the 90 units in the new building. So that led us to having a central spine so that we could keep the public or the guest traffic to the center of the site instead of bringing it to the periphery and some of the side streets when we felt like 32nd was the main thoroughfare for that area.
What do you mean the easement?
There's, 32nd or 31st Street used to run through the site.
Right.
And so we cannot build on that area.
There's, there's utilities and other things that run through there.
No, that makes sense, yep. I thought you were talking about the entrance off of 32nd Street. You said 90 units?
90, yep.
And that's in the unit?
So that would be the...
That's Phase 2, that's this one, okay. Phase 1 is 24. I still, I still think it could be possible though to utilize those two side streets instead of creating an extra driveway. You could do a driveway right next to the bed and breakfast into the property and still keep your circle. Do you think that would be possible?
Well, I think it impacts what we were trying to achieve from an architecture perspective. When we looked at the, doing the 90-unit layout, we wanted to keep it in a way that it was responsive to the neighborhood itself. So by having a two-story building with wings that came out that was more responsive to the massing of the neighborhood seemed important to us rather than shifting all that massing to the street itself.
What do you mean?
If, see how we have like three wings and the, each wing is more massed towards what a residential property would look like? And then they come together in the back so that you have that kind of community space in the back, whereas on the street level, it feels more residential to the neighborhood.
Sorry, I still don't like the entrance off of 32nd Street. I think it's going to create a backup and it's going to potentially push to not have any more parking on 32nd Street, which has already crunched. That's just me. Thank you. Oh, sorry, the public hearing is closed, but if you remember, you can let us know through an email, okay?
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, not right now.
I've got a couple of comments.
Okay.
I know that when we're looking at the rezoning here, we're look, one of the concerns, council always has, is loss of housing opportunities. And when we're looking at moving LDR potentially to the PUD, one of the things that I think often gets lost in the housing discussion is that this is actually an increase in housing for the community. We often, when we're thinking about housing, we're thinking just about, about houses or about apartments, but really what we're looking at is 24 additional housing units in the community and that there, there occurs a domino effect that the folks that are moving into these assisted living units have come from houses. Those houses then open up, which may open up another house, which then may open up an apartment. And so what this actually does is creates 24 more housing units all down the line. One thing that we like to say at council is more housing at any level creates more housing at every level. The other thing that I, that I like to make a point about is that a lot of people don't realize is that Rest Haven's a nonprofit organization. Why do I bring that up? We've mentioned all the time when we're dealing with Habitat for Humanity or Jubilee Ministries that they're able to build housing that for-profit organizations would not necessarily be able to build because they have access to donor funding. That hasn't been mentioned by Rest Haven here, but I think that that's part of the process here. It was mentioned by the applicant, the fact that they had a capital campaign here, that they have had very generous donors here that have given them the opportunity to be able to build this facility in a way that a for-profit organization may not have been able to build this facility. In a way that this, that the community, our community has come together and donated to this project to be able to create 24 more housing units within the city of Holland. It is within a residential neighborhood, but in an area that has not had any housing on the site. I actually, my very first house was at 32 West 32nd Street diagonally across from this site. I walked that parking lot with my wife in the middle of the night when she was first in labor for our oldest son. I've been through that, through that space many, many, many times. My wife's grandmother was in the legacy building on the corner. I know that small elevator, I know those bathrooms, I know those hallways. That is, that building was in dire need of improvements in the 1990s when I was in that building when she was living there. I think that this is a good project for that neighborhood. I know that she had an open house and I know that there were a lot of positive comments from the neighbors. I think that you, you have made accommodations for the neighbors and I think that this is a good project for that neighborhood. I think that it is a good rezoning. We're not just rezoning it to HDR, to high-density residential. We're, we are looking at rezoning it to planned unit development, which gives us more flexibility to put additional restrictions on what can be done here in ways that we wouldn't be able to do where we just redone it into one of our, our normal zoning units. So with that being said, I'm, I'm in favor of both the rezoning here and the approval of the site plan.
Okay, any other discussion? I have a question.
Fire away.
But have you ever had coffee in the basement?
I've never, I've never been in the basement of the legacy building.
Or gone to a chapel?
I, I have not.
Well, I'm one-upping you on that one.
Non-alaniga never invited me.
I learned how to play pool in that basement. I, yes, I would agree with you though a lot on that Rest Haven. They are a nonprofit. They are, they have a huge standing in our community and I think having an assisted living in the neighborhood is huge and it's great for the local schools to be able to walk there and do caroling and build those partnerships with those grandparents. My, all of my kids have done that from the South Side, walked over there. And I want it to stay. I want it to stay in a neighborhood. I don't want it to be on the outskirts of our city. I think that is a huge contribution to the neighborhood. That being said, I do not agree with where the driveway is. I do want to see Rest Haven expand and continue to be a part of this community, but that is probably the one thing on the site plan that I do not agree with. Any other questions?
Yeah, maybe this is on the actual traffic. So if there were an entrance on Central, I'm guessing there's some truck traffic sometimes that comes in to deliver supplies or other items. I mean, I see Central as more of a neighborhood kind of area that that could be a challenge, I'm guessing, Steve?
I, I think that's fair. I think that's probably why you see our traffic map, kind of recognize that same thing, that the... Kind of recognize that same thing, that the major street, which are tended to handle, a little bit more traffic. And Thirty Second Street is obviously identified that way, so I think that's a fair assessment. Brian White, our transportation director, has, you know, reviewed the traffic study. I haven't heard any big concern from him, although there certainly could still be some improvements that come out of their review, but...
I guess my only response to that is, all of Thirty Second Street has houses anyway. So, driving a delivery truck down Thirty Second, you're passing houses. So, turning off of Thirty Second onto Central where you're only passing houses on the left side, you're still not invading a whole neighborhood. You're literally coming right into that business, right off of a side street. I, I really just want to avoid having more backups on Thirty Second Street and utilizing the two side streets. But that is just me, I don't know if anyone agrees with me on that one, but I don't.
I, I think that, that the impact is pretty min, I mean, pretty minimal if you, from the traffic study. Like, a couple dozen cars or dozens of cars as opposed to hundreds of cars as opposed, with this new, with this new development. Obviously, that'll increase with the larger, with phase two and phase three, but I still think that the impact will be minimal considering.
I, I would echo a little bit of what you're saying. I think the concern I would see would be if the term of using the parking on Thirty Second is part of the count. It feels like it creates a blind spot if people are parked along the road there, coming out of that. So, I would maybe encourage our road engineering team to think about that a little bit more specifically just to make sure that movement in and out of it. I feel like the master plan in this does kind of skew more towards utilizing College in a heavier way, just with the layout of this. And I think with the intermittent use of that entrance off of Thirty Second as part of phase one, I, I'm not as concerned with that element of it, knowing that in the future, there's additional connectors to College.
I do think Thirty Second, like crossing in Central or in College is really dangerous. Those people, I mean, that's totally outside of this, because people go across that street, people are going really fast. So, you know, as we look at traffic studies and trying to get people across Thirty Second, or if the neighborhood wants to come over to engage with Rest Haven, we might want to consider some kind of crossing walk or more of a lighted crosswalk there to, to slow that traffic down because it, folks go really fast while above the speed limit there regularly.
My only other point is too, is that we've added a turning lane in front of Medi Lodge on Sixteenth Street for this exact same reason. To get in and out of that facility safely. So, to avoid having more curb cuts, because I walk down this street with my kids and do lots of walks, and to do another curb cut on Thirty Second Street, which is already busy. I just, as we go into more phases and increasing the number of visitors, I know that it's not a huge impact, but...
Brooke, this is purely anecdotal, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo what the traffic study said. My mother has been at the Farmstead since December, which is a larger facility than this. Most, almost every time I have been there, the parking lot is three-quarters empty. I've never once had to wait to get in or out of that parking lot. Matter of fact, I cannot remember an instance where there was another car going in or out at the same time that I was in a much larger facility than this. I think that, that, the, the, the traffic study is probably pretty accurate in the, the limited amount of traffic that's coming in and out of a place like this with the visitors. And Farmstead already has the independent living there, already has the cottages there. And what we're looking at here is assisted living, where it's the staff that's gonna be there and the residents and the visitors that are coming in and out. Again, anecdotal, but, but confirms what the traffic study has said.
I wouldn't compare Twenty Fourth Street in that section to Thirty Second Street in this section, though. The amount of traffic going through there is a lot higher.
Oh, no, but I'm talking, I'm talking about the in and out traffic that's come, that, that I have witnessed out on, out, out at the Farmstead.
I understand.
Yep.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't officially make a motion, but I will.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, I didn't officially make a motion, I probably, do we want two or three, Steve?
Three.
Three would be nice.
Three, we can do, do, do you have a particular order that you would like them in?
I, I do.
Okay, but what order would you like them in, Brooke?
The rezoning, the site plan, and then the resolution, please.
Okay, I move we approve the rezoning.
Support.
All right. So, Mayor Nathan Box makes the motion, Dave DeBlock supports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, rezoning is good.
I move we approve the site plan.
Support. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. All right. We have one more in the resolution.
We, we just need determination on that vote.
Right.
And Chair, did that pass, or, did that pass? I just, for the record.
Did we do a support on that one? I thought you just did the site plan review.
I just, for, just for the record, that passed, correct?
The resolution?
The, the site plan vote passed?
Yes, it did, sorry.
I just want to make sure that we had that on the record.
Yes.
Okay. And then, the third is for the PUD resolution, correct? I move we approve the PUD resolution.
Support.
Oh, who wins that one?
You go Dave.
Nate, Nate wins that one.
Oh, okay, that troubled it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All three passed, thank you for coming in. Next item on the agenda, ten thirty-three Lincoln Avenue. Is the applicant present, Willow Partners LLC?
Hi, Rob Horton, my company is Red Cedar Partners. On behalf of, we're the contract buyer on the property that Willow Partners currently owns.
My name is Mandy Goss, I'm with CESO, I am the civil engineer on the project. So, I'll be the one giving the presentation, if there's additional questions, Rob would be happy to answer them. Sorry, I'll open up my presentation here. Figure out how to use this thing, sorry. Thank you for having us here tonight to discuss the proposed, we'll call it a Speedway branded seven-eleven, to elaborate what that means, just because I know it kind of gets confusing with both of them there. Seven-Eleven actually acquired Speedway back in twenty-one. So, seven-eleven is the technical owner. However, it is a Speedway branded location, so it'll have Speedway signage, Speedway offerings, Speedway fuel. So, just to kind of point out the differences, because you'll probably see both throughout the presentation. So, just want to point that out. Make sure I hit the right button. Okay. So, what we're looking at here is the vacant site that currently is located at the southeast corner of US thirty-one in Lincoln Avenue and forty. This site is currently zoned corridor mixed use. And we're here tonight to request a special land use approval and a site plan approval for the proposed development. Of that five-point-three acres, I will point out that we are only developing just under acre and a half, so we're leaving a lot of it green, which is always nice. So, with this development, there is, I know you guys got an original site plan and you probably saw a second one, so I want to just kind of explain the differences and the reason for the revision to the site plan. There is a hundred-foot scenic M dot easement along US thirty-one. So, with that, once we spoke with M dot the first time, she mentioned, oh, it's not really very scenic, you guys should be fine, we can amend that. Then they said, never mind, we can't do that. So, with that change, we went back to the drawing board really quickly, shifted the site, so we're outside of that easement. So, the site, site shifted southeast slightly. Our access did not change, does not really change anything for the traffic study. It still has the same number of dispensers, very similar, just pretty much shifted on site southeast. With that shift, we still luckily can still maintain that entire tree line to the south for those adjac, the adjacent residents, which is awesome because it's very mature and definitely a benefit to remain. So, what we're proposing, as you can see on the proposed site plan, is we're proposing a full access driveway on Lincoln Avenue. Directly aligns with the Russ's Restaurant driveway, so we won't have any conflicting turning movements at that. It is a forty-eight fifty-two square foot convenience store. This does not have a restaurant use, it is just a like quick grab-and-go food type services. It's not made-to-order, it is not a restaurant, so just to point that out. It is a seven-auto fueling dispenser canopy. With that, there'll be fourteen fueling positions, thirty-five parking spaces. And then, we will also have an additional stormwater pond to the east of the development, south of the existing pond that's out there today, which is M dot's, has drainage that goes to that pond. So, we will put a new pond in for our development, and then we will connect it to that existing pond, and it'll continue to discharge. So, we will maintain all of our stormwater and have a controlled release relate into that existing pond. So, it won't impact that pond or cause any drainage issues moving forward. I know for water, we will have a slight water extension. You can see the match line to the right side there, just slightly up the road, it's not far, it's just south of there. So, we'll extend the water main up, cross the road, have a fire hydrant, and then our service will continue to our site from there. So, utilities are pretty close to available at the site, minimal extensions required. From a landscaping perspective, I just kind of wanted to point out, because I know it was mentioned possibly adding additional trees if needed along the rear to screen the residence. There is, I went out there and grabbed these pictures today just to kind of give you a good visual of how it looks. And I stood across the site and took, you know, so you could see, it was, you could very, barely very see maybe a little teeny break here and there, not much at all of the homes behind that tree line. So, that tree line is very mature. It will definitely shield our development from the residents to the south. And, you know, I, I couldn't find really a gap in that, the evergreen trees, which is great. So, the intent is to not touch those, leave those exactly as they sit today, and not have any impact. So, that way, it, I, it definitely, I don't think will have much of an impact to the residents to the south. From a building elevation perspective, this is the prototypical Speedway that they're working on now in, in the Michigan market. This is a newer building, it has not been done that I'm aware of yet actually in Michigan. So, it is a very nice building, it's more modern, not their old like hip roofs, it's definitely a different style. With this, it is proposed to be a CMU block. It's a textured block and a little bit more of a decorative block with the pack-clad silver panels and then the spruce nichah panels to add some accents to the building. So, there's an elevation you can see there. As you can see, the sidewalk is flush along the front, all the way around the building, and there will be bollards for protection of that sidewalk, so I just kind of wanted to point that out. This video here, it shows the interior, this is a seven-eleven interior, but it's identical except for signage and slightly colors. So, it's just a very good graphic, I feel like, to show you what the proposed site would look like. Oh, I gotta hit the button to start it, that might help, hopefully it starts. Is it playing? There it goes, okay, sorry. So, the only difference is like over the kiosks where it has a seven, it'll be the Speedway sign. Some of the striping where it's orange is red, instead of the orange and green. Very minimal changes from what you're seeing on this presentation, though. Just, it definitely is a more modern, clean interior of the building. So, let that play, but I feel like it, it's definitely an upgrade from some of their older sites that they have. This does have a beer cave in the back corner, and then the wine cellar for, so beer and wine would be the only offerings as far as alcohol sales. And then, that, this one just shows you some of the sign differences from that rendering, just to kind of show you. Again, the interior's not much different, it's simply a couple of the signs to be branded Speedway versus seven-eleven. The proposed canopy, I know it was mentioned, I'm sorry, I didn't have these in the, in the submittal, I didn't realize I didn't have the canopy elevations with our submittal. I know one of the comments was the height, we are below that twenty-foot. It's seventeen and a half feet, it's fourteen and a half foot clearance underneath and then three-foot fascia. So, the height of the canopy is seventeen and a half feet, so we do meet that twenty-foot max. It is a very typical Speedway canopy, as you can see, it has the gray stripes and the Speedway signage. From a traffic, we did have the traffic impact study done for this development. I will point out that it did recommend a right-turn taper into the site per the M dot charts. However, due to the fact of the way the lanes are currently sitting today, and we spoke with M dot about this, and so far, they've agreed, they're still giving us official comments, but she, in, on the phone, was in agreement with what we were talking about. The right turn lane there does turn into a dedicated right turn lane at the signal. So, to add a turn lane into the site and then having the dedicated turn lane at the signal, you're almost creating a right turn lane on a right turn lane, and it actually can cause more confusion. People get over early, it just, it actually can be a negative impact. So, with that, I don't believe M dot is gonna require that right turn taper into the site and pretty much treat that right turn as a dedicated right turn lane, which it pretty much is today. So, with that, traffic-wise, the level of service is not impacted greatly, there's obviously more cars, it's gonna impact it some. With this use, though, I will note that seventy-five percent of the cars are passed by. So, that means that seventy-five percent of the vehicles are already on your roadways today coming to the site. It is not a use that has a lot of dedicated traffic. So, just to point that out, so a lot of your cars are just people driving to or from work or to the basketball game, wherever, grabbing some stuff and getting back on the road. So, I will point out that the actual traffic generated is not as high due to the fact that a lot of the cars are already on your roadways today. But, we appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And thank you.
Great, thank you. I think you're correct on the right turn lane, though. I would hate to see that invading the sidewalk, and people are already slowing down to turn right onto thirty-one. So, one-hundred percent agree on that one. Any other questions for the applicant or comments?
Yeah, I do, I'm, I'm envisioning a lot of traffic from the neighboring residential use, bicycle traffic, foot traffic, what kind of accommodations have you made to deal with that?
Yeah, so there is a sidewalk that runs along the north side of our driveway there so that they can access the site from, so there'll be the crosswalk at the drive itself, and then it has the sidewalk that connects to our facility along the north side of our access drive. We were gonna put it on the south side, however, with the trees, we didn't want to have to remove trees in order to put in the sidewalk.
So, so they've got a, they've got to cross over the driveway in order to get to the sidewalk?
They do, unfortunately. We did look at putting it to the south side, but with those existing tree line, we would likely have to remove some of those evergreen trees, which we were trying to prevent so that it definitely is a positive to keep those there for those residents.
And any, any bike racks places, because I, I'm picturing those kids riding over with their, riding with their bikes?
We did not have any on this plan, but we'd be happy to add some, that is not a problem, we can accommodate that.
I think that would be a, a great idea.
That's a concern of mine, too. Steve, this is a question for you, how much space is between the driveway and, unless you know as the civil engineer, the space between the driveway and the tree line?
Let me open up the plan here.
Okay. No, that's great. I'm just curious, because a sidewalk can be four or five feet, right? So, if there's enough space to put a sidewalk right next to the tree line and we can keep the trees, is that possible?
The edge of the tree line is actually, like, if you look at our, how it was surveyed and they surveyed the like canopy edge of the tree line, it is right up to the edge of our driveway.
Okay.
So, with, you know, I mean, the center of the tree might not be impacted, but we would definitely have to scalp some of that evergreen, which is not ideal.
What?
I say, I wish I could show you my screen, because I...
Yeah.
Brooke, if you don't mind, if it, if it's all right, maybe I'll just run through a couple of comments, address that, too, or...
Yeah, go ahead.
So, just real quick, you guys probably remember this site, we've approved a gas station here before. I bring that up because that pedestrian connection was the exact same layout as what we approved before. In part, I think to avoid getting rid of some of that landscape screen. I was the one that asked Mandy to go take a look and see if there was some gaps out there, because as a result of them sliding the site a little bit further east, I was worried about car traffic, shining lights now into the trailer park area. So, I appreciate you guys going out there and taking a look at that. But as far as the pedestrian crossway connection into the site, this is exactly what we saw and approved last time. So, appreciate you guys... So appreciate you guys bringing up the, the bike rack, too. So that, again, is something that Udo allows us to look at. Gives you the authority to require, on, again, that plan last time, we did require at least one facility that can accommodate at least four bikes. So I was suggesting that we do that same thing for this site as well. As pointed out already, you're being asked to review and approve the site plan and the special land use permit. So we've recommended that you approve both of those. Again, it's probably been assumed here, but M dot actually controls both of these frontages, so they're the ones that will make the call on the, even the Lincoln frontage as well. If you took a look at this traffic study, you probably noticed there was a comment about there could be some slight backups. I think they were using two and three percent of the peak times and that they recommended evaluation of the timing of the light on thirty-one. And so hopefully, M dot will consider that if needed as the project, if the project were to go forward, so.
Because there is a middle turn lane on that road, on Lincoln, correct? There's already a left turn into the site.
Right. And so the concern was, is that there would be people in that far enough backed up that if somebody was trying to turn left into this site from thirty-one, that there could be a blockage. But they were calling it literally, I think, two percent of the AM and maybe three percent of the peak. So very slow and.
Very low possibility.
Timing of the light would be the, how to address it. So that was, I guess, it for my comments. We're, again, recommending approval with just a few of those, I guess, what I would consider normal conditions. They already pointed out the water main extension, which is maybe not a normal condition, but it would be something that would come along with this project.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. At this point in time, I will open a public hearing, and you can come forward and speak to this item specifically. The comments have to be on this item only, okay? State your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Charles, twenty East Thirty-First Street. And I thought about it, but this is not the time. But I do want to just bring up that there is so much alcohol being sold within a mile and a half radius of this, of this project of Speedway. I'm just gonna ask you, you can brush me off, that's fine, how much alcohol needs to be served to people who are driving? So you're asked, I wonder if Speedway would even want to build there if they weren't gonna get a license to sell alcohol. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Questions, comments, motions? We have two here as well. We have a special land use and a site plan review.
I move we approve the special land use.
Support.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And then that does pass. Special land use passes. Site plan review?
I, I move we approve the site plan review with the additional requirement of requiring at least one bike rack for four bicycles or greater. Were there any other requirements that you were looking for in there, Stephen?
I think there was just a couple of things highlighted in the staff report, sort of follow-through with some lighting details, and obviously, we'll need the details of the canopy that they presented, but.
And, and I'll add, and all other items that are listed in the staff report.
Thank you.
Support.
Any discussion on that item? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. All right. Site plan review and special land use do pass on that item. Thank you for coming in and for your very detailed presentation. I don't know if you've seen a video like that before for the inside of a property, but.
It's nice.
Yes. Yes. We want a donut now? Oh, you want a, okay, got it.
Slurpee, slurpee. We gotta have slurpees.
Yeah, perfect.
Well, you have to, yeah.
Oh, those slurpees. Moving on, communications and petitions, scheduling of public hearings. There are none. Communication from commission members? Communications from staff?
I don't have anything.
And no administrative site plan reviews. Not very often do I have to turn the page over, unless you want to speak to the item that is listed on there.
That's just one of the administrative site plans. It was the parking lot addition for DeBoer Bakery. So just a bigger parking lot.
Gotcha. Motion?
I, I just have a comment on that. I drove by there today, and there were vehicles parked on the site where that parking lot is going to go, so I'm glad that they.
That's where you get your donuts.
Yes. Yeah. It's definitely needed, so.
For sure. Any other comments? Okay. Your mic is not on, Dave.
I'm saying thanks for letting us know. You're welcome.
Perfect. Motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Support.
All those in favor say goodbye.
Goodbye.